I just gave them to everybody. I couldn't, I couldn't remember who did new.
Once you get one, Mike, you won't go back. Once you get one, you won't, you won't go back. Okay, we'll call this meeting back to order and next on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Was that McClure students that helped us with the Pledge of Allegiance?
It was.
It was McClure students and there's a McClure parent on the screen actually right now. So yes, how's McClure students joining us today?
Dr. Gray, were two of those your students that helped us?
Dr. I don't think so, but I would love to have them join next time.
The Dr. Gray students, well, his children will be this Pledge of Allegiance folks in two weeks from now. Thank you for volunteering, Dr. Gray.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Reverend Williams. We have a motion. Dr. Bonebrake offers a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? I don't see any, so we're ready to vote, Mrs. Lester.
All votes are in and the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is election of officers. So we get the chance to elect a new board president, new board vice president. So at this point, we'll entertain a motion to nominate a new board president. Mrs. Bulley.
Yes, I would like to nominate Reverend Williams as our new president of our board.
So we have a motion to nominate Reverend Williams for the board. Do we have a second? Stuart Campbell offers a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? I don't see any, any other nominations. I don't see any, so I think we're ready to vote.
And the vote is open. And all votes are in. The motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations, Reverend Williams.
Thank you.
So I do it or you do it?
You do.
Okay, so next on the agenda is a nomination for vice president. So entertain a motion to nominate a vice president.
So I move to nominate Mr. Lalo Munoz for our vice president.
Thank you. And Reverend Williams offers a second. Any discussion on the nomination of Mr. Munoz as our vice president? I don't see any, so we're ready to vote.
And the vote is open. And all votes are in. The motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations, Mr. Munoz.
Congratulations, sir.
So we will take just a moment to change seats.
We thank everyone for their patience. This is such an exciting time every year for the board president and the vice president to officially take their seat. If you were in the room with us right now, you'd see some smiling faces and people rearranging seats and computers. In a few seconds, we're about to get back started. Again, thank you for your patience and congratulations, President Williams and Vice President Munoz.
Well, thank you. I will defer my comments to our board comments portion of it. So getting back to our agenda. Next item is, do we have any public communications? Next item is disposition of business by consent. Entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the items of business by consent as presented and authorized the board president or superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second? This Bulley offers a second. Any discussion? Right now, we're ready for the vote.
All right, and the vote is open. All votes are in and the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Give me a minute here. I'm trying to get up. That brings us to superintendent's report. Dr. Anderson.
Good evening. As I've shared previously, we are reviewing our strategic plan with you. At the last board meeting, we reviewed the strategic plan under curriculum and focused on dual language, which were where the majority of the changes are. We previously shared that this year in 2021, we'll be moving that plan for that five-year timeframe. And most of those goals that were put on hold for about two years, we're just going to pick back up with working on those. So tonight, we're going to go over the communication section of the strategic plan. Be prepared that at the very next board meeting, the first meeting, I'm sorry, the second meeting in July, we will finalize the final changes in the strategic plan, which all other operational items that have occurred that will be new upcoming, we'll be reviewing those. We will conclude with that and then we'll be asking for the board to take action on approving that plan to continue as presented. That plan again is under the board agenda for our public to know as action at every board meeting so that at any point, we can actually take action should we choose to. But keep in mind, this meeting, the next meeting, we'll be presenting on just a section of that plan to chunk this out. We're excited that Dr. Gray and his team are on the screen with us. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gray, who's going to start off with talking about the updates in our strategic plan under communications. Dr. Gray?
Well, thank you, Dr. Anderson. To Dr. Anderson, School Board President Reverend Williams and members of the school board, this evening, I would like to share our strategic plan as it relates to communication. Within this area, we have four objectives that I would like to highlight. The first objective, 4.21, addresses the percentage of parents who report to Topeka Public Schools is meeting their needs through reliable and effective tools for communication. To highlight a few action steps, we have done the following. First, we've expanded our audience for broadcast and broadcast channel. We've implemented the KTSP television station and we've also added an analytics team member. We've increased the percentage of parents and community members who use Blackboard Now School Messenger by 10% annually and have implemented the electronic staff communication request form and the TPS staff appreciation Ecard that is used to highlight the great work of staff throughout the year. We've worked to increase social media following by 10%. Followers for Twitter has increased by almost 200 and followers for Facebook have increased by 1,200 since this time last year. Under objective 4.22, we have increased engagement via our community partners. We've launched a new website that we're so excited to share a snippet of it with you at this moment. Mr. Galen, if you could go to our website, I want to share with everyone the communication site and some of the neat features that we have on our communication site here on our new website.
As he shares that site, those that are on the board know this, but those that are in the public should know that Dr. Gray is our Director of Instructional Services who oversees communication. And Dr. Gray will introduce the remainder of his team as he prepares to go into his website.
So with that, you see the communication website. Thank you for that, Mr. Galen. Here you have me, who is the Director of Instructional Services. We have Ms. Phoebe Nordeike, who is the Communication Specialist to the Superintendent. We have Ms. Kylie Fleck Tally, whom you guys will be able to hear from a little tonight. She is our Communication Coordinator. You'll also see a familiar face, Mr. Dan Garrett. He is joining us as well. Not tonight, but he will be joining us on next week. You may remember his face from KSNT. He's one of our newest team members. Keep going. We have Ms. Riley Atkinson McLaurin. She's our new student intern. We also have Mr. Darren Wallace, who's our Communication Webmaster, who specializes in analytics. And then lastly, I don't see it on here, but it is on the site, is another Communications Specialist that we have and his name is Mr. Roger Shidler. He comes to us with over two decades of experience and he's familiar with TPS, actually the Tulsa Public School District. And he comes to us and we're so excited. And one of the things that we learned about him is that his grandfather was or is Mr. Jay Shidler. So again, we're excited about our members here. So if you look at our website here, on the left-hand side, you'll see some of the features of our site, some of the things that we have, such as our communication plan. We created that communication plan this year. We have our community news, whom Ms. Fleck Tally, she'll speak to that momentarily. We have, I'm trying to see here, the staff communication request form. And then also, we have some other things such as our annual report and also our calendar. And so again, we're so excited about this new website and the features that it offers, which Ms. Fleck Tally will speak more about that momentarily. Also, we created a new community newsletter and the team member who's responsible for that is on with us, Ms. Kylie Fleck Tally, who will speak briefly about our newsletter. If you could just, yes, Ms. Fleck Tally?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Gray. And to Dr. Anderson, School Board President Williams and members of the board, good evening. I'm Kylie Fleck Tally and I serve as the Communications Coordinator for Topeka Public Schools. Prior to my employment at Topeka Public Schools, I worked as the Communications Coordinator for the Kansas Dental Association for eight years. My role in the Communications Department here is to assist Dr. Gray in implementing communication strategies, manage the team's projects, produce videos and graphics, and send district email communications. You'll recognize my name from the positive news stories I email to the Board of Education each week. And I also send upcoming positive stories to our media partners and encourage them to highlight TPS events and activities. Another area of focus is the community news, which you'll see here. You'll notice it has a brand-new look that I created using S'more. And we believe the fresh design, updated graphics, and enhanced features will allow us to better serve our TPS families and staff. For example, accessibility and translation tools are built into the S'more template right there at the top. So families can change the publication's text size and text colors for visual clarity and also change the language of the publication to better suit their needs.
Thank you for that, Ms. Fleck Tally. Also, under objective 4.2, we've obtained community feedback. We've created a comprehensive communication plan, also a communication roadmap. In addition, we created the COVID Communicator, which was very popular with a lot of people around the district. We've also continued to promote video series highlighting major events through monthly videos highlighting seniors and staff. And we recently were recognized nationally through INSPIRA for the Good Job video highlighting our staff. For 4.23, we have collaborated with HR Human Resources to implement creative recruitment strategies to attract new talent. We've implemented a digital marketing recruiter that is shared with HR and meets monthly. We've utilized local businesses to target enrollment through movie theater, ads, billboard, and commercials, which have been created and placed on KSNT as well as WIBW. Additionally, we've implemented a new student-run television station with original student content that is shown every two weeks. And we launched our student internship program and we had our first college intern in 2019. And we hired our first high school intern this year, who's on with us tonight, Ms. Atkinson McLaurin, who will share a little bit about her experience as an intern.
Thank you, Dr. Gray. My name is Riley Atkinson McLaurin and I am the first high school communications intern for Topeka Public Schools. In May, I graduated from Topeka High School. And this upcoming fall, I will pursue a degree in journalism and communications at the University of Oklahoma. After testifying before the Kansas State Senate Education Committee on behalf of the JAG-K program, I found myself speaking in front of the JAG-K Board of Directors, where Dr. Anderson offered me this wonderful opportunity to become an intern in the Communications Department. This opportunity will allow me to gain some hands-on experience in communications, which will in turn help me to find a career path. I'm truly honored to be following in my grandmother Kay Meadows' footsteps after she was the first African-American woman to serve on the Topeka Public Schools Board of Education. It truly feels as if I'm upholding her legacy and I'm extraordinarily grateful for the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Atkinson McLaurin. Finally, we conclude with the communication section of the strategic plan with 4.24, which addresses positive perception at each TPS school. We have reviewed the existing climate survey structure and website and solicited, excuse me there, and solicited input on changes and updates. We met with DCAC to review and solicit feedback on our webpages on multiple times throughout the year. And we reviewed our demographic survey for this year as well. We have provided climate surveys to students, parents, and staff, including the Superintendent Advisory Board and DCAC. And we created a system for ongoing feedback from principals on services and support for schools, such as suggestions, as well as the temp line, which was implemented. And that concludes the communication area of our strategic plan.
With those items that Dr. Gray has mentioned, all of those items, the ones that are relatively new, would be things that we would continue to strengthen, such as the website is not fully functional yet, but did launch in the last two weeks. The student intern is one of what we hope to be many in the upcoming year. And they will have within that strategic plan, particular goals of how many interns and what those interns might be doing. Additionally, the other areas that Dr. Gray listed, such as our commercial, which launches tomorrow actually for the preschool on KSNT, I believe, and WIBW, and several of those other steps that are all within the last year or so, certainly need continued refining and building. So what you'll see in the strategic plan are specific data-driven goals in terms of how many more students, how many more Facebook followers. Those are the things that you'll see that will be slightly adjusted. Many of the overall objectives, however, were listed in the prior strategic plan and just have been their roadmap moving forward. I'm going to stop there and turn it over to the board for questions for Dr. Gray and team and/or for questions for Ms. Atkinson McLaurin.
Are there any questions or comments? Dr. Mickelson was.
Just, I'm appreciative of the redesigned website and wondering what still needs to be done on it.
Can you go to the main website, please? One of the things that we did do over the last year and a half, we studied other national districts that won road awards, which are districts generally that have 50,000 to 100,000 students that win the National Urban School District Awards every year. One of those school districts is Boston Public Schools. We looked at their site amongst many others, Charlotte Mecklenburg Fairfax. But we really liked the active video and we're doing so much with video that there will not be a site, at least in this county, or probably anywhere in Kansas, in the immediate Kansas area, with this kind of site. So we have now videos integrated in it, but what is not quite up yet, again, it just went live about a week ago. We've asked DCAC to give continued feedback and I'm going to ask Dr. Gray to mention a few of those items. And there are some graphics that you don't see on the side as they're continuing to perfect those. Dr. Gray, can you share some of the continued updates that board members can expect? And some of the feedback you've gotten recently that's caused for additional changes?
Yes, ma'am. Some of the feedback that we received was again, just consistent language throughout or consistent information throughout our website. I know one of the things that we brought up was counseling, the area of counseling. We had a link on there that was a dead link. And so we've gone back and we're creating that counseling link as we speak now. Some other things that I will share is with particular schools, like schools being signature schools, once they go to those websites, they want to see information that really highlights that they are a signature school. And so that's, those are some of the things that we're working on. Also, one of the things they wanted to know is how, how do we communicate with families? And if you go to our website, Mr. Galen, if you would go to communications under departments, communications, this is a document that was created in response to feedback that we receive from DCAC and other families. So under departments, communications. And it's a document that we created on how we communicate with families. If you scroll down a little bit, keep scrolling there, keep going just a little bit. And you probably would have to refresh the page because it's there.
And as Dr. Gray goes to that, this is a document created within the last week. Once again, you know, things that we want to make sure that are refreshed. When Dr. Gray finishes sharing that, I'm going to point you to some very specific things that we know need to occur this upcoming year. And then we'd like for the board's feedback as well now and in the future as we continue to adjust this. Dr. Gray, do you want to speak to your document here?
And if you could click on that document, Mr. Galen, it's a two-page document. So again, this is a document that shares how we communicate with our families. As you can see, it talks about our website. It talks about the different social media platforms that we use. It talks about our app, our television station. And then it also gives information, if you scroll down just a little bit, Mr. Galen, you'll see about emergency communication as well as school delays and closures. So these were some questions that we consistently got from families. And so this was a document that we created so it could be a one-stop for families so they can really have an idea of how we communicate with families about these particular items.
If you go back to the homepage, Mr. Galen, if you click on the About Us first, and then once we go through that, we're going to click on Departments. Under About Us, often you'll find districts have things about history. And in Topeka Public Schools, traditionally, we talk about how many students we have, things like that. What we like to see is the history. We have such a rich history here in Topeka and former schools. And we've captured that at Bishop in terms of naming some of those classrooms as former schools. But it's really not captured on our website about who we are. We rebranded about five years ago, four years ago. And we made sure that the capital is there because there's a history for Brown v. Board and we want to talk about that. So what we anticipate doing is adding the full About Us section to be more of a historical piece. And then capturing some of the historical documents we actually found right here at the Burnett Center that we want to upload and archive and put on this piece. The other thing is, under our departments, currently under departments, these labels are what you see, which this really does not adequately reflect the number of things that parents may want to see. As an example, family engagement, there's really not that link for that. There are some other things that we know in terms of departments and we're looking at other districts much larger than us. And things that just aren't captured on here. When we talk about college and career, you really don't see that kind of language on here. And not everyone knows what T-Calc is. So we're really making that language a little bit more language-friendly over the course of this year in our strategic plan. Those are just two broad examples of some adjustments.
This is not, not meant to be a criticism because I like where we're going with this, but it seems like the font is a little fuzzy. I don't know if we can, I thought when we looked at a technology meeting, I thought, well, maybe it's just my computer. Then when I look at it here on the actual website, it still looks, when we looked at that attachment, the vertical, I mean, this is nitpicky, I understand, but it does not have the crispness that I would like to see. You know, when you look at, when we clicked on that, how we communicate, that was very crisp where other things it just doesn't have.
Your page looks a little blurry. Mr. Galen, were you about to speak to that?
I was just going to say, if we're speaking specifically to the mega menu here, I can, I can definitely touch base with School Messenger and request that we use a different, more sharp font. And then in our links and.
Do you see what I'm saying?
I do, actually. I thought it was my glasses, but this is.
I thought it was my glasses, too. We both have bad eyes.
I didn't notice it as much directly on my computer, but as I'm looking at it in this situation, in this context, I can request that the mega menu be sharpened up a little bit.
This looks like the vertical letters, the vertical aspects of a letter are very broad and the curved aspects of a letter have a little narrow, more narrow font. And I just think it would look more professional if we could.
Absolutely. If you go back to the homepage and actually the larger the letters, perhaps the more crisp, you'll see that. But we will certainly ask that font to be changed. So you know, the homepage, you'll see again, the larger letters, you see a rather crisp and very clear font. But we will ask for consistency in that regard. And we're actually looking for that feedback. It's not criticism as well. This is a new website. The only way we continue to tailor it to be your site for our school board is to give us feedback ongoing in terms of how we communicate. I think a big step forward, and I think Dr. Gray and his team, is that the parents want it that one-stop shop. Like, where do they go when it's snow days? Where do they go? They're looking all over the website. They're not sure for what item, where do they go to? That one pager is going to make a big difference for our families and all of our principals will be introducing that piece. So we'll go back to the font, other suggestions and or questions for Dr. Gray and his team moving forward.
I was going to ask, not everybody has cable, so Channel 14. I may have seen a link to that. Is there a link that if you don't get Channel 14, that this webpage will lead you to that?
That is correct.
So we can watch the student news programs and those things very easily if we are not connected to cable. That's great.
And we're so excited because you don't have to pay for cable. It's the equity, it's the opportunity gap, you know, where normally you'd have to pay in order to see that. But you will not have to pay for that. You can just go to our website and at least see that portion of the cable TV station.
And one other question, we are going to have a very distinct link for their mental health. Reach out to their families and.
Yes, ma'am. Currently, we have a mental health link, but, and we have an equity link and things like that. But you know, that gets confused with counseling and individual schools. So we're really refining, what does that language look like? And, and it even gets confused with trauma-informed services. And so social workers have their own page, counselors have their own page. So that's one of the perfect examples of what we're refining between now and as we start in August. Counselors and social workers are off for the summer, so we're really going to be using their feedback to help put everything under one umbrella. We're using, however, again, another district's template to some degree, or multiple districts, to try to at least, when parents go to one link for mental health, for example, they should see social workers are here, counselors are here. I mean, they should automatically be able to click on that. And right now, they can't. So that's another example of a refinement, if you will. So yes, you will be able to go to one page in the future.
So will there be a link like, my son needs help and I'm reaching out to my school to get that help? Do we have something like that or are we directing them to a? Uh, is, do we have something like that or are we directing them to another site?
We have that currently, but it may feel a little.
Help like right now.
Right now, yes, kind of like a tip line. So we have that now, but it may be, it may feel a little buried and I don't know if Dr. Gray wants to tag team on this. Currently, it's a tip line. We get tips every day. Uh, staff give tips, uh, and they also give praise in that lit little tip line. Uh, or they ask for things from the dream team, something we added two years ago. Uh, but that tip line, we have students that have that automatically put on their computers. It was something the mental health team really we wanted to see on every student's computer. So they have that ability, but again, the um knowing it just from looking at the website, you might not know exactly where that's at and how to get to that. So, but that will still be there. The difference is you'll know how to find it more easily. Uh, for example, it may be one of the links right below under quick links and and it'll stand out to you. The other thing on that website where it said, welcome to TPS, and it's not up yet, but it will be. It should say, click here to learn more, because if you click there, it's act, it's going to take you to a welcome video. Uh, and we can change those videos at any time, you know, so whether it's a, a video about the board during Board Appreciation Week, whether it's a video about whatever those items are about, we can always change that video. Currently, it's a um welcome video about students and you'll, you'll see our drum line, a staff member, you'll see students and things like that. Uh, but you wouldn't know that there's a video there yet. So that's another update that'll be happening. Are there other questions or uh concerns or, or direction you'd like to give regarding this portion of the strategic plan?
Just specifically on the website, again, I just caution us to use um to avoid abbreviations, CI three T. You know, I, I looked on your mental health one and, and there's the ACE checklist. SCL, uh, virtual SEL lessons. People don't know what that is, so we just need to make sure we're descriptive in our words.
Absolutely. So noted. Right now, all the old content is rolled over to the new page. Uh, but so noted, that's one of the continued updates uh we will make sure to make is to look at all of the past abbreviations we've always used. And spelling those out before August, so people know what that is. Thank you, Dr. Mickelson.
Ms. Stuart Campbell.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank you for all of this and I want to welcome Ms. Flicktally and our student intern Ms. Atkinson McLaurie. So welcome to this dream team. Um, exciting stuff. Okay, a few co- other comments. Um, can we use a different word besides tip? So like if I'm a parent looking for help for my child, the word tip to me doesn't make me think that's where I.
Like a crisis hotline or emergency notification or, or just help line, period.
Yeah, maybe help is better than, than the word tip. So anyway, that was one comment.
Thank you.
Yes, also, um, I'm wondering for our limited English-speaking parents, for them, when they go to our website, how are, is there there's like a button to change the language and where, where is that? I, I was looking for that myself.
We're going to go back to the main website and Dr. Gray will walk us through that.
Yes, that is correct. So if you would go up at the very top, right? Yes, you'll see the dropdown menu and let's go to Spanish. And so you click on Spanish or whatever language of choice. And you will see it reflect in the language that the person has chosen. And that's throughout the website.
Okay, very cool. Thank you. And also under instructional programs. Um, I love how we're highlighting college prep, avid English learners. Can we add dual language?
Well, we have five different programs we're adding and so, I mean, because we have signature schools that are somewhat on there just from the Good Job video. Uh, but we have video footage from, you know, a number of schools. So dual language will be one of those. Uh, but in addition to dual language, um, Topeka High has a number of just amazing programs that we have not, it's an international school and most people don't know that. And so, you know, adding that on there as well. So that, those, that video feature will actually be adjusted throughout. So that's not a stagnant uh thing. That's, you know, video that we have on hand right now, let's get it launched. But that will change throughout. So absolutely, and you can look forward to those updates. The feature piece as well, like where it says click to learn more, like we'll be able to say um, click to learn more about our dual language program. So that way it takes into another video in addition to kind of the promotion video, if you will.
Okay, good. So we do have the promotional video for dual.
So we do have some promotional videos that, not all of those, like even the click more that we just did, that was from, I don't know, twenty eighteen or nineteen, or maybe twenty seventeen. So many of them are a little bit older, but and so they're all from Scott. But honestly, I think those really tell the story about how it starts anyway. So we'll go back to those. In the promotional video now, we do have, I believe, a teacher from Scott. I think she was a Horizon teacher. They've had a few of those uh, in that video along with others. But yes, we do have some promotional videos from Scott over the last five years. So we'll have that click here to learn more about dual language.
Yeah, I just want to emphasize that if we could have just a one, two-minute video about our pre-K twelve dual language program. It's such a highlight of our district. And uh, it could make families decide to move to our district and transfer their children.
I, I agree. Well, the other thing we should, really could and should do, uh, as you kind of talk about that, remember we talked about at the last meeting under curriculum? Having, you know, this um academic leader really overseeing innovation as it relates to uh cultures. What really under the department, at least my vision is that under that department link, that's really where that K twelve focus kind of goes to. You know, um, you know, K twelve dual language, you know, learn about other cultures under department. Because even if you click on a video, it doesn't tell you everything and people aren't going to all go to the school dropdown button. But they will click on departments or about us. About us is another area. So I just think some of these other areas over time are being developed. Now, Dr. Mia is in process of finishing her NSBA. Um, our uh National School Board Association, um, uh, presentation uh proposal. One of the things that she's pointing out is that our dual language students, and I believe Dr. Kip is on with us today, our dual language students K through twelve all outscore our general ed students. And so, you know, looking at where do we place that on the site and how do you make that come to life? And we don't fully have the full question of where and how. But just the fact we're now having that conversation. And uh, what Dr. Kip shared was this is the first time we really could, because we didn't have K twelve. Now, it's gone on for a few years, so we actually have three years of data now as of this year. But we can really look back on and have that comparison. So that's going to be somewhere in that either dropdown or under departments and I'll be working with Dr. Mia to look at where, where do we place that exactly? Um, along with a few other programs that are unique to TPS that most people, you know, wouldn't be familiar with. What I'm excited about Dr. Gray's mentioning of his team, our twenty-one uh most recent um joining person, uh, who he said was Mr. Shot, Shot Schliedler. Twenty-one years in TPS Tulsa um public schools, so he was another TPS, seventy thousand students. And his entire job was video. So we now have an expert videographer that's joined us, having left Tulsa there for twenty-one years doing this very work. And so just the idea that Dr. Gray was able to identify him. Um, you know, recruit him into this space. He'd already come back to Topeka and had been here for a couple of years. But to recruit him into this space, we're really excited about just taking that video piece and really telling our story. Um, so he's known in Tulsa as a storyteller and a videographer, so having that and then the analytics person who I believe is on with us tonight is Mr. Uh, Wallace on with us this evening?
It's Dr. Anderson.
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wallace to talk about analytics. Our analytics, this is completely new. He just started in a role about a month ago. Um, and he'll share kind of what he gives us. Now, this has changed really everything. It's been a game changer of how we communicate, where and what we communicate and even when. Mr. Wallace, can you share a little bit about the analytics portion that you're doing in the background?
Certainly. Well, it was kind of new to me to find out that Facebook and Twitter offered such opportunity to have analytics on their social media applications. And it really points to being able to see what posts impact the public the most and what posts don't have so much effect on the public. You get a great idea of what's working and what's not working of what you post on Facebook and Twitter by using these analytics. So hopefully in the future, we can leverage that to make sure that we get more fa- followers and don't lose followers in the process of what we post.
So Mr. Wallace, every Monday gives us uh the analytics on what stories were posted that parents liked, what they didn't like, and then Mrs. Flicktally is working with Mr. Wallace on doing Google Analytics for this new webpage. So literally, if you go to and you want to learn about dual language, or let's say they don't get any clicks, well, we, we, we're not doing something right with telling the story then. So now we actually will be able to track our followers and our number of viewers on our website. Uh, and uh, we continue uh for the last month, every Monday, we're getting uh an analytics report from Mr. Wallace. He's a member of the technology team, but uh, Mr. Galen graciously shares him with this role. Uh, so that um, he can really give analytics to the communications team, changing literally what they post week by week and how often. It's been really, uh, and I see that as a huge game changer down the line in particular. So we're excited. So I think dual language will be better leveraged because we're just having some data-driven decision-making and sharing the story in ways that perhaps we weren't in the past.
I'm not sure how much work is involved, Mr. Wallace, to build that report for Monday, but I would suggest that's too infrequent. You know, if you've got a story you're talking about and it doesn't get a hits, then you're going to by the time you get that message and develop the next story, you're ten days down the road. And possibly you, we, we look at it with a shorter interval, maybe. I don't know. It, it may be too time-consuming to build a report every day, but I just think every Monday may be a little too infrequent.
All right, so Dr. Gray has, so each member of the team, Ms. Flicktally is considered his communications coordinator. So she does kind of the communication with you. She coordinates the project management sheet. Um, and then she has the intern as her responsibility to give her projects. Now, the analytics portion from Mr. Wallace each Monday is a piece of his technology role and he can certainly do that even more frequently, but do know that Mr. Uh, Dr. Gray has one member of his team and that's their role is social media. So every day, they actually have a meeting to say, what do we, what do we post? How did it go? So that's really an everyday kind of thing. The overall report that Mr. Um, Wallace gives is more in line of when you look at the week overall, here's what did well, here's what didn't do well, here's what. So you know, sometimes we get all excited that, man, something was uh shared six times. Well, he may say, hey, last year, this time, that same, you know, a story similar to that, like registration or whatever was shared more frequently, or you lost followers even though that story was shared a lot. You lost twenty followers in this last week. I mean, it's been really interesting seeing patterns over time because up to now, we're just looking at that day. You know, wha- what did or didn't get likes that day? Well, that's really not enough. Um, and then we never did Google Analytics on the website. So that's a completely new area that Ms. Flicktally has introduced to us.
Sounds like you're doing both. And if somebody, if somebody's in, in charge of social media, they get the message twenty-four hours later that this was a hit or this was not a hit.
Yeah, tha- that day and sometimes even that evening. So Mr. De Mayo, some of you all may remember him, John De Mayo, he was just a superstar in all areas of communication, uh, so much so that after two years with us, he opened his own business. Well, he's still our consultant. So every month he gives staff development in their video and social media. And as he's doing that, um, that's really helping the entire team just further refine that. So Dr. Gray mentioned uh Mr. Dan Garrett joining us. Part of his role is broadcasting in video, but really, um, Dan Garrett is working with social media. You know, he does it for KSNT. He has quite the following. So that's really kind of our social media person. Currently, it's been Taylor Mall. Taylor Mall uh lives out of the area and he's transitioning back to his, well, to a position within his area. But Dan Garrett is already prepared on Tuesday. That's his first day. Uh, and he'll continue that social media just every day, looking at that and then changing posts accordingly. And you know, sometimes we post too much. Well, we have a really big story, but then we posted all these other stories on top, so nobody ever sees a really big story. And Mr. De Mayo kind of gave training on that. So we're doing this and that. You really almost have to do both. Dr. Gray, is there anything you wanted to add to all of those items, Dr. Gray? I think there are other questions here around the table.
No, I don't think there's anything else to add, Dr. Anderson.
Mr. Munoz says.
First of all, I, I think that uh this work that you're doing in terms of videos is really great. Um, you know, as things change, information is, you know, consumed through video and so making sure that we have the experts who know how to be able to create a narrative and tell the story that we want to tell to the public to communicate that to parents is really important. Uh, my question is that oftentimes I'm taking my, my board hat off and my, my parent head on as, as a you know, parent of three small kids. Oftentimes, my interaction and, and the way that I consume what I'm looking for is through the venue of, of a school. And so my question is oftentimes I, I don't think that parents necessarily are, are there's a lot going on in their lives, so they're not necessarily interested in what's going on in, in another school, but how can we work, or, or are you already, do you have a plan to work with schools and, and the communication that they have directly with parents?
Dr. Gray, I'll turn it over to you and let's go to a school webpage as well while he's speaking.
Yes, uh, thank you for that question, Mr. Munoz. Uh, as you would notice that if you look at our website, all the schools have updated webpages. Again, a lot of that information has been uh migrated over from the old webpage. Uh, so uh, there's a lot of work that we are in the process of doing. Uh, we, today we were on the call with school messenger setting up a time for principals to get training. Um, as that, well, when they transition back from the holiday as well as for staff. So again, there will be some staff training. Uh, principal, uh, the webpage, uh, person for each school will receive training on uh what their site will look like. And so if you just look right here, if you notice there's a button, if you see there, I'll go down a little bit, Mr. Galen. I know this is a question that came up about staying connected, sign me up. Uh, that's a question, I mean, that's a budding button that we could use for the, I think, uh, Ms. Stuart Campbell said something about the help me button. Again, that could be a button that could be placed on everyone's website, so it can go directly to the principal in the event that, you know, someone needs assistance. But to answer your question, uh, yes, uh, there are pieces that's going to feed, if you notice, that feed directly into the website from the district webpage. And then there's going to be other pieces that they can tailor just to their school.
Can we go to Scott dual language since his children go there? And then, um, or I know you have a child going to middle school. You do still have a child at Scott dual language, correct? And I think we have two board members, uh, Mr. Stuart Campbell, you still have a child at Scott dual language? My goodness, our young people grow up fast. Okay, so I'm, I'm outdated myself. Okay, so we're going to go to Scott dual language since we were just talking about dual language, uh, and then take a look at as we go straight down. So when they have that um, so they'll get a chance to put up their banner. Remember, principals are off for the summer, so they'll get a chance to update their banner as well. And you'll see now consistency. I mean, literally, you'll see, you know, at, at least you know, as a parent, if you have kids at elementary, middle high, you know, with consistency, here's where, you know, this is on the right, school news is up here. Video that's current is on the, you know, on one side. Um, and then some areas of pride about the school. So you'll see some of those things that are pretty consistent on their site. They will be working on this um, uh, at, at the end of July, when they come back for their principal's retreat and updating their we- websites with their actual uh, with much of their content. Um, of course, all of the stuff about the principal and other things are, are still there. But see, here's, here's the thing here. Look, if we go to Dr. Mia. She's a dual language principal, so this really should be a video. You know, this shouldn't really be a stagnant photo with a lot of writing. Um, it, it real, and then expecting someone to change it to Spanish to read it. This really should be her saying, oh, my gosh, welcome to Scott. We're the only school. I mean, that's what we're talking about as the change and this is where we're going in the strategic plan. Uh, on the tail end of that, Mr. Munoz, since we're talking about parents, if I may, sir, continue for just a moment. Dr. Kip is on with us this evening. Um, we uh know that and, and Dr. Gray's wisdom of looking at, um, uh, climate survey information. Uh, we know when we ask parents, what do you want to stay for next year after the pandemic? What do you want to change? What do you want to keep? Parents gave that feedback. But we know and talking with Dr. Kip, and I believe you've had some conversations as well, Mr. Munoz, we've been talking about demographics. Our enrollment is supposed to drop across this county. Well, let's find out why parents are actually leaving. You know, wouldn't it be powerful on this website to have this link that as part of what you do when you you know, if you're going to transition from Topeka Public Schools, that you had a link to click to say, is that for a new job? Is that due to a new home elsewhere? Is that due to, you know, what are the reasons why you're transitioning? Kind of like an exit survey to our families. How was your experience when you were here? So we anticipate some level of survey. Right now, we give surveys, just emailing them to parents all the time. Well, rather than that, just embedding it as a link that the first thing you do, if you know you're going to transfer, here's part of the transfer process. So we're excited about the demographic application that will also be embedded in this um, in this website. Uh, Dr. Gray or Dr. Kip, do you want to add anything in terms of what you've learned uh that parents want to see stay moving forward uh regarding that climate survey? Oh, Dr. Kip, there you go. that parents want to see stay moving forward regarding that climate survey? Oh, Dr. Kip, there you go.
Hello, good evening. Yeah, it was, I'm really excited about the possibility of having that data more transparent and put in a public forum, so other parents can see what other parents are thinking as well. We also adopted the thought exchange, which is kind of a revolutionary way to collect feedback, particularly on really challenging issues such as the pandemic. But I'll just share a couple bullet points that we gathered this spring on what parents were really excited about, that they want to see continue moving into next year. The number one kind of interesting thing was that over 1,000 parents, they want to continue with the routine cleaning in the classrooms. You know, not only did it help with obviously COVID-19, but helped to prevent some of the other commonly transmitted viruses. Obviously, consistency, you know, if we do have to go back and forth, you know, that there's some sort of kiss, consistent and communication going on that. And also, several parents wanted to continue the mask wearing, or at least have that option. And so, so these are some things we can dive into more outside of this meeting, but certainly, it's really fascinating to view some of this feedback from parents. And, you know, there are some wonderful lessons that we learned this year that we may continue carrying some of those tactics into next year.
And very briefly for the public, can you just mention what thought exchange is?
Thought exchange differs from a regular, like, survey, Survey Monkey. Thought exchange is kind of a shared ability for people to solicit feedback. And other people can see that feedback and upvote it, downvote it. Obviously, there's filters to prevent any kind of shenanigans or any kind of inappropriate comments that get filtered through. But it allows people to really share those thoughts and agree or disagree, creating quite a nice little microcosm of thoughts from parents that are really, it's revolutionary, and I'm glad that we jumped on the, on this new technology, and we'll be using that a lot in the future.
Dr. Gray's big focus has been on getting staff feedback, parent feedback, and I thank him for that. And then student feedback with Miss Atkinson-McLaurie on with us. One of the things that we said that we'd like for her to do, and we're gonna bring her big picture right on up there, is that, you know, for her to say, hey, students, I'm into Pico Public Schools for the next two months before I get ready to go to college. What are some things you want me to highlight about you this summer? What are some things? And so you're gonna see her social media voice speaking to students as well, because one thing that we learned is that many of our followers are adults, and we're not that exciting, you know. And so with our adult population, you know, our numbers aren't as high as they were when, for example, Mr. De Mayo was here having this big following of students. We really want to engage students in the platforms that they're most used to. So they started back with our Instagram, I think I said that right, Instagram account. In addition to now utilizing LinkedIn, which is a new piece that we started using. It's not new technology, but we just started using it in the last two weeks. And then certainly using Miss, our student intern, and this is a paid student intern, that will be using that social media and deciding what venue to reach out to her own peers and to have that engagement. So I'll turn it over back to the board if you have any questions about Miss Atkinson-McLaurie and things she's working on and, and her plans ahead. And I believe KSNT just interviewed you yesterday, right? And I didn't hear you quite clearly.
Yeah, I just interviewed yesterday.
And we're excited to see a profile of, of Miss Atkinson-McLaurie moving forward. And we, as a paid internship, where this is one of two or three jobs that she actually holds as also an honor roll student. So we're just so proud of her.
Thank you.
Ms. Bolley.
So I am interested in your plan on reaching the students with your social media ideas. So what are some of your plans?
Is that question directed to me?
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I plan to just reach out to a lot of people that I know, honestly. A lot of students look for how to find out more information about the district or what's going on with other schools. And they're always like, how do I find that? I don't know where the website is, or things like that. And I just think it'd be easier to direct them to the social media, because a lot of times, that information that they're looking for has already been posted.
One of the areas that we hope that she'll be taking on is pod, doing a podcast. We currently do not have a podcast station. We previously had one some years ago from someone who really had an interest in it. And so we really would love to see a student podcast take off this summer. So we hope to kind of gear her towards that a little bit, and then make sure that she has one project that she takes from beginning to end, which includes student engagement and followership moving forward as one of her success criterias in the measurement of success of her role.
Thank you.
Very good, Dr. Gray. One of the things that that Scott and I have been on our high horse about since we were in site council at Topeka High School was communication. I mean, it just seemed like communication was not getting through. So the website's wonderful. What about the people that don't get the website? I mean, there are people out there that don't have that ability to tune into the website. So you have ideas about communication, number one, and I'll let you answer that. But and two, I just have a suggestion. I know DCAC is a very good place to get parental feedback. But I might suggest going to individual schools. I mean, you have a very good communications team, and just through the year, visiting a site council or visiting a PTO, and see where those parents are with the websites. So, but just those two, two things. And but I appreciate the answer about, what about the people that can't get the website?
As he answers that, can you pull up his strategic plan, Dr. Gray? You might need to tell Mr. Gallen where your strategic plan is that ties into the district strategic plan as you answer what's in that.
Yes, Mr. Gallen, if you can go to the communications website under Communication Plan. And if you click on Communications Plan, and it's going to be near the end of the plan we're going to talk about, it's a place that talks about, just scroll all the way to, yes, keep going, keep going all the way to the bottom there. Right, I think it may be, go back up, please. Think, go back down, please, go back down.
Communication channels, I think you just, and audiences, is that the area where you?
That is it. So again, great question, Dr. Morrison, and that is an opportunity that we've been working through. One of the things that we did through the pandemic, because we knew that everyone did not have access to the cable television or to website, was to make sure that we put flyers out at our various food sites. So that was another way to get the, get the word out to individuals. We also partnered with our clergy, tried to get information into their hands to make sure that it was at churches and other local businesses around Topeka. But if you notice here, this is our communication channel, and these are the vehicles that we have used. Again, we're still, we're open to suggestion and feedback. Again, we have the newspaper that we have used, a radio station. I do a monthly radio broadcast with WIBW, so that happens each month. And so, again, that's another way to get the word out. And then again, you know, speaking with principals, emailing principals, you know, having principals put it on their webpage again. And through that, sometimes they create flyers that, you know, put in the hands of families. So again, that is an opportunity that we are continuing to look at. And again, any feedback that you have to, to help us in that area, we welcome it.
Now, Dr. Gray is quite modest. One of his team-building activities for his communications team is that they volunteer in the community. And so they do that each month right now. So just this past week, they actually were with the rescue mission and hosting, I believe they might have been in Oakland or one area, perhaps in East Topeka somewhere, where people were taking showers, and this is in the rain. According to Dr. Gray, Ms. Fluctali and team, and our intern, they were all out there. And people were allowed to go into the mobile homeless van and take showers and get new clothes. But his communications team has committed to just volunteering each month, just getting out in the community, listening and talking to people and meeting people and hearing their stories. That's, that's one of the most powerful pieces, that boots-to-the-ground piece. It's a volunteerism effort that we started some time ago with principals. But Dr. Gray felt quite strongly, as did Ms. Fluctali, to, you know, begin volunteering as well as part of just their team-building activities. So I think that layered approach, I believe in the communications channel, he called it interpersonal communications, which is what it is. It's, you know, pushing the technology aside while it's good. Don't forget to just connect. So your suggestion about going to site councils, which we haven't done in the past, we'll add that as one of those, and continue to think about, how do we just connect directly with people? You know, just going to schools and meeting people. Thank you for the suggestion.
So will our website be shared with Topeka organizations that are trying to spread the word to bring new people here to Topeka? So will there be an attachment there where they can see our Topeka Public Schools and what their children would attend?
Absolutely. I'm on the Go Topeka Board, so I can answer that one for Dr. Gray and for all of us. I am the only superintendent that serves on the GTP. So as part of, on that chair and executive board, it's, it's an honor to serve in that space, but it's an opportunity as well to talk about Topeka broadly, to partner with businesses, partner with job fairs, but also tell our story through the GTP and having their story on our website about who is Topeka. One of the things that Boston has that we anticipate doing is they have a city view of their city. When you go to their website and you see that video that rolls, they have a city view of Boston. Well, we want to have a city view of Topeka, because we want to talk about how Topeka is fabulous. This week alone, the GTP is already making welcome baskets for new people that are coming to Topeka, who could be potential families, and they're making those for us, so that we have, you know, just all the restaurants and all the new places. So we're excited about the collaboration. Part of our strategic plan, one of the members on our strategic plan, Ms. Foley, is a member of the Go Topeka. So she's been a longstanding member the last five years, and I know Matt Provarnik is committed to having her continue. We have the extended school year. We want to thank Dr. Gray and our student intern and Mr. Wallace and Ms. Fluctali and team. They've just done an awesome job, and I just feel lucky to be able to work with them and witness all that they're doing in action. We so appreciate all of you all. Thank you for the great communications work. And with that, Dr. Gray's leadership as, as it relates to communication takes us right to the extended school year. He has been sharing stories through the media this week included. There's been a media story on summer programming and extended school year. Very briefly, for about two or three minutes, we talked about this before, the extended school year, but we want to make sure that you hear the two-minute update from Ms. Ritter. If you remember, she previously started the program. She's sharing it with Ms. Paige Roberts. But Ms. Ritter wanted to give you a quick highlight about where we are now, as we are in this July first date. Ms. Ritter?
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Yes, we are two weeks into our summer program. We have about 300 students attending each week, so we have been busy and loving all of the kids in the buildings again. If, Mr. Gallen, if you'll go to the first picture, I just wanted to share a few highlights of the classes that we're offering this summer. Typically, we've done pre-kindergarten through 12th, and this year we added preschool options. So this first week was arts and crafts for our preschool kiddos, and they did masks and visors and all kinds of art projects with their names or with building things. And so that was one special thing that we've been doing each week with preschool. Our next class, there's some more examples of their stuff. They have a very energetic preschool teacher who is doing amazing things with them.
And as she's highlighting these programs, these are our enrichment programs. Keep in mind that we also have an academic camp that's currently occurring. And she'll give you just a general update about some of the content areas specific to those and answer questions. I'll turn it back over to you, Ms. Ritter.
Thank you. Yeah, so I just, this one was our super science group, and they have covered the gamut of science standards. They've done egg drops, they've done volcanoes, slime, rockets, like everything that you can think of in science. This next slide is a brand-new class that was offered this summer called Birds, Bats, and Butterflies. It's a shop class at Teacow, and they made birdhouses and butterfly, I guess you'd call them houses. They loved it, got to use a saw and put together these articles themselves. Our next one is baking, which is always hugely popular. I love these kids in their chef hats. It's so cute. They've made cupcakes and pizzas and cinnamon rolls and learning all kinds of basics with baking and science and math and all that goes along with that. Our theater class was typically offered for two weeks at a time, and this year, we wanted to give students an opportunity to participate in it weekly. And somehow, in one week, they managed to put together two small productions. They built the set, they created their costumes, and they didn't get to have a live, big audience, but they had some of us cheering for them, and they zoomed it out to the parents on Friday so they could watch. It was pretty incredible. And then on the academic side, this is a picture of some students at Scott Magnet. And you'll see in a couple of the pictures that they are on their iPads. I wanted to share that they are piloting a new program for the district. It's called Footsteps to Brilliance. It's for pre-K through third graders, and it has gone over incredibly well. Our kids love it, the teachers love it. The program representatives set goals with the school, with the kids about reading minutes and hours that were on the computer doing the program. And we have blown those goals out of the water, and the kids are doing them at home, which was the goal as well. So that's been exciting. So next week, we wrap up, and we've been really excited to have the opportunity to have kids on both sides. You know, we've got academic classes going on with our middle schoolers and our elementary kids. And then we have these other enrichment classes happening, also pre-K through 12th grade. So busy two weeks.
Can you give an overall number? Now, keep in mind, board members, school ended on a Friday. We started the summer programming on a Monday. So busy two weeks as we're approaching July. But throughout the month of June, we've had programming since that very first Monday after the last day of school. And we didn't highlight Quincy and some of the other programs. That's what you've seen in the news most recently. So those are other camps that are occurring also in the district at this time. With that, can you give an overall number of enrollment? And enrollment at, this year has greatly increased. Am I correct in that regard? And all classes are covered with certified staff?
Yes, we have roughly 300 on average each week, and we're expecting that next week. And we've got kids on waiting lists that we work them back in as soon as we've got a spot. And we have had some really great teachers doing a lot to make this a very educational and beneficial summer for our students.
We're going to open this up to the board for any questions you may have. Previously, we've talked about our secondary end. Now, secondary, it's credit recovery. So those students are actually taking classes on college campuses, also at school and ACT. And we are offering the ACT at Topeka West this summer. And so people are able to continue to go to bootcamp and have privatized tutoring on the secondary end. But any questions for Ms. Ritter about the elementary, or if it's about secondary, I'll address those.
Ms. Foley.
What is the length of our waiting list, and why do we have a waiting list? Why are we not able to attend to all the students that would like to be helped out this summer?
There were just a few classes that were especially popular, and we tried to keep the numbers at, well, actually, we were originally trying to keep the numbers at 15, like we did for the school year, but we went over into 23, 24, 25, but it's only one teacher. So we just tried to honor that love. But it's only one teacher, so we just tried to honor that level with just one teacher in the classroom. And when I say waiting list, it's just a couple of the parents that have just said, hey, if no one comes next week for this class, can I slide my kid in? And we've been able to do that.
Now, am I correct, Ms. Ritter, that there's no waiting list for the academic courses?
No. And I've, I've had people reach out mid-week, and we've done, we've immediately put them in.
Right, so, so we will not have waiting lists for any academic course. But for enrichment, be it theater or something like that, or a class that's meant for a small group such as baking, those are areas where waiting lists might occur, but that's a rarity. How many students do you have on the waiting list?
Literally like five. It, it's not much, and thank you for clarifying. It is just our enrichment side. We accommodate anyone that wants to join the academic piece.
And how many are actually enrolled in the academic piece?
We're about 150 on both sides, so 150 in the enrichment, 150 in the academic.
Anyone else? Dr. Morrison?
There's been quite a bit of publicity about kids losing ground during COVID. Math and language arts. Have you seen any of that? Just, I mean, I, I realize that you're not necessarily testing all the time, but do you get a feel for it?
A feel for if they've lost?
Yes.
Oh, I, I mean, I think that after the school year, we all recognize that there are some learning gaps that might have occurred, which is the intent of the program, to make sure that we are covering all of those standards that a student would have been exposed to. So what we did on the academic side was ask parents to enroll their students based on the grade level they just finished so that we could use that as an opportunity to review all the essential skills and standards prior to moving into the next grade level. And that's what all of the instruction and planning has been centered around is, you know, and some kids may not have had any, but no matter what, we are covering all the basics so that they're ready to walk into the next school year.
Now, Dr. Morrison, two things that you should know. I believe Dr. Kip is still on the screen with us, I believe. He may have already jumped off. So we do have cap scores back, and so when you talk about learning loss, now, here's the odd thing. We believe the standardized testing after you're in a traumatic event is not going to be the same as standardized testing if you weren't in a traumatic event. So we're not really sure what was trauma induced in terms of, for example, we've had a student take a Scantron test and right after the pandemic and not do well, and then take it weeks later and do well. So, you know, so those are, it's interesting to see, much like if you were in a car accident right before you came to this board meeting, you probably would not be as calm and poised and just even able to process and answer questions in the same way that if you hadn't had that accident. So we believe that testing right after a traumatic event is, is not going to give you the same kind of data, that being the case. So we anticipate there'll be some gaps that may be there that may or may not be purely academic, okay? That being said, Dr. Kip is on to share with us some highlights of areas that we outscored, which we didn't necessarily anticipate outscoring in the case of a pandemic. But we've seen that the curriculum that we use still produced some pretty positive outcomes district-wide and by individual school. Dr. Kip, can you share the district-wide content area that continue to have gains? And then can you share some of the specific schools as well, sir?
Yes, I don't have all the data in front of me, but certainly one area that was surprisingly high across the board was science. You know, of course, at elementary, just the fifth graders take science and the eighth grade, and so it's, it's a smaller pool, but those scores were significantly higher than in a pandemic year versus the previous year. There was a gap year where it was full-on COVID, where they canceled the state assessments for 2020. But comparing it to 2019, we've started seeing, actually, some pretty interesting, you know, some mixed results, you know, we'll be honest, in terms of some schools had some regression. Some schools still outperformed the state in particular areas. Just off the top of my head, I, I know McCarter, McClure, McCracken.
Landon.
Landon. French.
Eisenhower.
Eisenhower's eighth-grade math outperformed the state. So it, it's a very interesting, and we're, we're still diving in, you know, the, the, these are preliminary results. The state board has to bless them here this summer. But yeah, it's, it's interesting, particularly with Eisenhower. I mean, that's just an amazing feat to, to outperform the state on, in a pandemic year in mathematics. That's a very particularly difficult exam as you go up into secondary. And so, and we've seen preliminary state numbers as well, you know, in the 20 to 30% proficiency. So, you know, it'll be interesting once the state finalizes that, and then I'd be more than happy to present more, more detailed information to you.
We're, we're really excited that we've seen that kind of performance at individual schools, but also overall. We use that not only the curriculum, but the project-based learning we did this last year. So for science, we actually delivered the experiments to everybody's house. So you could still, even for things like facts, you could still bake at home with the recipe while still attending remotely. So even if you're remote, you had all the supplies at home that you could continue to do science experiments. And what that does is that it allows for parents to then be engaged. So now we're thinking about, do we add that as a layer in addition to what we already do in some fashion to send students home with those kinds of things? So math, science, and technology in our STEAM schools have been a large focus of Topeka. And we're also wondering, is that just reaping the, are we now reaping the rewards now that we've built, you know, some STEAM schools over the course of the last three years and, and seeing some of these improvements? So again, we're excited about, just excited about that as a whole. Dr. Kip, since we did mention Scott, which is where the summer program is occurring, Dr. Kip, regarding the dual-language component that I referenced earlier, can you just briefly share the data that really has come to light that we're trying to make sure we get out across the state regarding that?
Yes, I'm glad you, you mentioned that. We've done, like Dr. Anderson mentioned at the onset, we, we haven't had really the, the strong data pool of K-12 or pre-K-12 dual-language, but now we do. So this summer, my team and I have been doing some really in-depth statistical analyses comparing dual-language kids' performance on state assessments versus non-dual-language kids. Over the past three years, dual-language kids have outperformed non-dual-language kids in math, ELA, on state assessments. But we also dived a little deeper. We thought maybe, you know, we need to triangulate some other data. So we looked at grade point average. Dual-language kids had higher grade point averages than non-dual-language kids. And finally, we looked at attendance rates. Sure enough, dual-language kids had higher attendance rates than non-dual-language kids, and these are statistically significant findings. This isn't something that's just qualitative or opinion. These were really robust numbers that we used. The methodology behind was very strong. I feel very confident in these results, and it's so exciting to see. We all kind of knew that that dual-language component enhanced brain, you know, elasticity and plasticity, but to actually see the numbers is, is really exciting.
Thank you, Dr. Kip. That does conclude our extended-year report.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Yeah, I, I just want to publicly acknowledge Ms. Ritter. You have really done an incredible job because not only have I written her with questions about my children's enrichment programs, but also for some parents who are limited English-speaking, and she's been so helpful. You've been, Ms. Ritter, so helpful, so responsive, like within like an hour. I'm like, okay. I know you have a thousand things going on, but just extremely responsive with emails going and English and in Spanish, and she, she's helped a lot of, of kids get enrolled in enrichment and quickly, and I thank you very much for that.
Thank you. I, I want to thank you as well for your help with getting our migrant families enrolled. I have appreciated you.
Any other comments? Okay. That takes us to action items. Says here, possible approval of the strategic plan.
President, we'd like to just bring that back at the next meeting as we finalize the final pieces of the strategic plan.
Sounds like a plan. This time, board member comments. Doc, can I switch this up? I'm gonna go to my immediate left and go around. It's a new day. Mr. Menos. Yes, I'm switching it up. I got to fire the mic.
He is the president, sorry. Yeah, I think my kids right now are in the extended school classes, theater and sports and whatnot. And so I, what's foremost in my mind, what's resonating right now is this idea of, of equity and making sure that as many of our kids who could benefit from it, that they're enrolled in it. I, I didn't do quite as good of a job as getting that information out to families as I could have, but I'm going to be making a mental note for next year to make sure that every young kid who could benefit, make sure we communicate these opportunities for, for families. And as, as has been noted, popularity is growing, and I think most families, if they can make it happen, if they can know what the benefit is for their students and then how it's going to help them, that they, they take advantage of it. So first off, I want to thank Ms., as a Ms. Ritter for, for her work and as well as all those other teachers, because I, I drop off my kids at 7:30 in the morning, and their teacher's already there. So it's, it is a big effort on behalf of lots of individuals to be able to get this program on the ground, to be there for the kids the way they need us to be there, and so I'm appreciative of that. And other than that, I do have a couple of tidbits for, for Dr. Gray, and I'll send him a couple of messages on things for the website to keep in mind. And I, I really enjoy the, and appreciative of the district's disposition that, that this is a working project. It's a process, and that it really does take all of us chiming in and the sense of that you're, we're all open to feedback to make sure it's the best possible version of a website and, and as a tool as it can be, and it really does take all of us to, to, to make it possible. Last thing, I'm just appreciative of, of the board and those to vote and, and give me this opportunity. I think like all of us here, we're, we're all trying to do the best that we can to, to move 501 forward and to make sure that kids, every kid, has the best possible opportunity to be set for, for life. And, and so I'm, I'm excited about this next year in this new role.
Ms. Stuart Campbell?
Yeah, so you've heard, my children also are benefiting from summer enrichment. They, baking was, was very, very cool. In fact, they were featured in the, the photo. They learned how to make from scratch, from Chef Livingston, I think is his name, pizza, cinnamon rolls, muffins, cookies. And then they brought it home for, like to share. It was, it was great. They, they had, they, they learned a lot. And yeah, and this week, theater, and my, my son is doing the Birds, Bats, and Butterflies, but he's actually only one of two students in this grade in this like age cluster. So, so I think, wow, that's cool. He's, practically has the teacher to himself. And yeah, he came home today telling me that he made a, a birdhouse, and tomorrow they're going to do a butterfly house, and anyway, they're having a good time. And let's see, yeah, next week is art and forensic science. I can't wait to hear what my daughter's going to learn in forensic science. So I just think it's really cool we're doing this. And the other comment I wanted to make is about all the professional development that's available for our staff this summer. That is something, it's like over 100, right? Like, it's like 100 different choices of courses they can take. And we know that education, like any field, is, is constantly changing and evolving, and there's so much technology now, and there's just loads of courses that teachers, not just teachers, that staff can take to, because they need to continue taking coursework for their licensure requirements, but also there are staff who just want to take the professional development because it's, it's interesting, and they want to, they want to learn about it. So like there are, there are a few on here that I thought, man, I want to get in on this, like how to create an equitable classroom culture, learning in the brain. Anyway, it's just a very impressive list that our staff have access to. So I think that's pretty cool, and that's all my comments.
Ms. Foley?
Mrs. Ritter, I hope you will please thank your staff that is there at 7:30 to take Mr. Menos's children and all the other children and thank them. I, it was a very difficult year, and to have these teachers step up and step forward to take on this, this task for the summer, it just shows their joy of teaching. And we want to thank them for being there for the students out there that needed this this summer and the academic piece and the extended summer piece. It's just, please let them know as a board how much we appreciate that. I, I was wearing this Scott mask because I understand that Highland Park High School coach, Mr. Williams, Coach Williams, took some of our players down to Oklahoma and actually won their champion, Living the Dream Championship, Mr. Williams, won that championship. So we might have a lot to look forward to in this next season, so I'm very excited about that. And I wanted to congratulate that team of young men who went down there and worked so hard. Not only do we have the fastest young lady in the district, but evidently we have the strongest young man in the district, and I saw him on the news, so we want to wish him a lot of luck. I believe he's coming up for a big competition, and so we hope he comes back with that title as well for the state of Kansas. And I wanted to challenge our board members who will be leaving us that you will also get into the bodybuilding so that we can watch your progress on news as well as our former Mr. Woods has done. He's been doing an excellent job as well, so we look forward to all that hard work you're going to put in and buffing up. So it'll be fun to watch.
Dr. Mickelson?
I wouldn't hold your breath on me. Just a quick update, a technology meeting was Monday evening, and today marks the introduction of two-factor authentication, and I tried to log on to our Gmail account tonight, and I got this error message, you're not, oh. I had a, you, you're not, you don't, to keep your account secure, Google needs to verify it. I did that, and I still couldn't get in, so I may need some more help to get into my Gmail. I got in over the noon hour and was able to get into it, but it is a necessary evil, I think, to be able to make sure we keep our electronic communications safe. And also, it was intimated earlier that, but just to make clear, we're now transitioning to school messenger as opposed to Blackboard, so that's a transition that, that we'll see. And then finally, I just want to congratulate John and Lalo in their positions as board president and vice president. John and I have sat next to each other for eight and a half year, or eight years, so kind of lonesome over here, not next to, to John, but I'm, I'm confident. I'm confident in your, in both of your leadership abilities.
We had to see my therapist.
And look forward to your leadership going forward, so congratulations.
Dr. Morrison?
I can tell Ms. Foley that that will not happen. And once you reach my age, you don't buff up. You barely keep it the same.
Maintenance.
Maintenance. Congratulations, I want, I mean, it, it is a very big role. I mean, you don't realize what the president does until you're the president. So we wish you the best, really. And if the two- And if, if the two past presidents can help in any way, we would be very happy to. The other thing I, I want to congratulate the communications team. This has been something, Scott and John both can remember what it was like when we first came on the board. I mean, virtually no communication. I don't, I don't want to put that down, but it was much more difficult. We went to enough said meetings and they were using social media and by golly, this is what, this is what's gonna make a big, big difference. So congratulations to administration and to, to your team.
I'm just a little concerned that we will be too dependent upon the computers and not have the boots on the ground, as was mentioned earlier. Scott, dual-language, I wonder how much is related to the computers and, and the compassion of Mrs. Ritter and the connection she has with the teachers there and the attention they are giving to the students to inspire them for the studies and progression. And I suspect there's a lesson there for the other schools. And I, you know, the, the computer connection. Parents ought to know they can just plain call the principal as well without waiting on an email response. I had an experience like that, which I won't bore you with. Got an immediate response from the Topeka High Principal twenty-some years ago. Anyway, the COVID has also brought about dealing with infectious diseases. And I wonder if we are continuing our ventilation improvement in the schools. Because that has been shown probably be superior to wearing masks with COVID being a sub-five micron organism. Most masks don't filter that out. And if we have stagnant air, that ought to help influenza and everything else. And it's been shown in several schools that improving the ventilation has been revolutionary. And last of all, I've been concerned about the transfer of students out. We lose students every year. We haven't had an exit interview or whatever that is called. I think a voluntary check-in on the computer is insufficient. If we can find out who's leaving and someone speak with them and find out. I, my suspicion is they're just leaving Kansas. The population of Kansas is getting older. And how can we attract more people to Kansas? I think improving the education system is probably of paramount importance. I know most parents, when they move somewhere, inquire about school systems. And if we can continue the year-round school, expand, embellish, literally make school year-round, we can boost the area's accomplishment in academia. That's all I have. Sorry.
Well, I want to thank everyone for their faith that they placed me by electing me to this position. I consider it an honor and a privilege. And trust me, Dr. Mickelson, Dr. Morrison, I will be calling on you. Because I know this is an awesome responsibility. And assuming this position, I want to honor the memory of Attorney James Woodson. Riley mentioned that her grandmother was the first African-American woman to serve on Topeka Public Schools Board Education. Attorney James Woodson was the first African-American president of the Board of Education. And also the late Fire Chief Joe Douglas served as board president and all three of us are members of the same fraternity. And so I look forward to working with my colleagues as we continue to engage, prepare and inspire students to a lifetime of achievement. And if there's no other business at hand, I'd, we stand adjourned.